And you're good.
Okay, I would like to welcome everyone to the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustee Meeting for September 14th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Jan Gaffney.
I'm here.
Dan Green.
Here.
Allison McFadden-Kiezel.
Here.
Nancy Moon.
Here.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Here.
Ann Rose.
Here.
Kristy Scholl.
Here.
And Julie Meredith, present. Now I will call for approval of remote participation of board members.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the remote participation of Jan Gaffney, Daniel Green, Allison McFadden-Kiezel, Nancy Moon, Marilyn Pomeroy, Ann Rose, and Kristy Scholl. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kiezel.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Here. Yes.
And Kristy Scholl.
Yes.
All right, now we'll call for approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Sorry. Doesn't matter.
Yeah, does it matter which one or doesn't?
Okay.
We're easy.
We're not too fussy about that.
Right. But it has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kiezel.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Kristy Scholl.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will have the call to the public.
Okay, is that me?
That's you.
Yeah. Hi.
Well, as you know, the Friends of the Library have been unable to have their September book sale. So what we've done instead, we've had book sales at the farmer's market every Saturday in August, and the first two in September, and it doesn't raise the same amount of money, but they were all very successful sales. And then we're also planning a vendor sale in the parking lot of the library. We haven't picked a date yet, but we're in the process of planning that. And we have two new board members, Jeanette Colidge and Janice Landauer.
Okay.
Sounds very good.
And that was a creative solution.
How much money did you raise?
You know, there were seven sales, and they all came in between $300 and $400. So some were over $200. Not nearly as much as the book sales, but better than nothing, and we have other plans, so.
Yep, good.
Planning.
Back room. Any other comments or questions for Laura?
No.
If not, thank you very much, Laura.
Finally, I got here.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the board? If not, we'll call an end to the call to the public. It's now time for a public hearing on our millage rate. So the public hearing is opening at 6:35 PM. If there are no comments on the millage rate, we will close the hearing at 6:36. Tonight, we're also having a public hearing on the 2021 budget. This hearing is now opening at 6:36. If there is no public comment, we will close the hearing at 6:37. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which has six items tonight. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I say, oh, okay, go ahead. I'll second then.
So Ann has moved. Was it Jan who seconded?
Yes.
Okay, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Does anyone want to discuss any of the six items in particular? If not, please call the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kiezel.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Kristy Scholl.
Yes.
Okay. How about library statistics?
Okay, now I need to share my screen. Hold on just a second. So what I have up on the screen is an infographic created by our community relations marketing folks that shows library services in high demand from March to August of 2020. So they made it, they made it pretty and interesting. So between March and August, which is the beginning of our COVID situation until we reopened, we did 5,858 inbound calls answered. We did 205 online chats. We purchased 1,200 new materials. We issued 331 new library cards. We did 642 take and make kits for the public. And over 2,000 curbside orders, curbside started on June 8th. In order to protect the public, we have ordered 24 gallons of hand sanitizer and 1,050 face coverings have been provided. And we have 55,000 surfaces that we've cleaned, I think, from our custodial staff. And then in terms of usage, obviously, our digital materials got a lot of use. So 7,529 hoopla downloads, that's up 86% over last year. And 20,673 overdrive downloads, and that's up 28%. And then we've also done 108 virtual programs. So it's been quite a lot going on despite the fact that we were, for a period of time, working from home and being virtual and not able to do as much of the physical materials as we would have liked.
And kudos, as you, as usual, I have a kudos. Kudos on issuing those library cards. My sister tried to use, my sister at her library tried to use it to download a digital book and was told that her card had expired and no one was able to issue her an updated card. So. Yeah.
Well, that's not what we were doing here.
No. Right, well, that's what I said to her. I said, oh, I said, gee, we were, we were issuing new cards and renewing old cards and doing all kinds of things, but she was kind of unhappy because since the library wasn't open, she was going to, you know, download some digital stuff and was told she couldn't, so. Good job, as always, to our staff. Yes.
I will be sure to pass that on.
Especially to our circulation staff, and Annette is our head of circulation during all of the time when they were doing curbside service and organizing all of that. Excellently done.
They were very hard.
Okay, I will stop sharing that.
And now for the library director's report.
Okay, so for my director's report. Okay, so in terms of general update, first, tonight, we welcome Nicole Evans to our meeting as our minute taker.
Hi.
Nicole is our time administrative assistant. We received 11 applications for this position and conducted four great interviews. Nicole has actually worked for CIDL as a circulation clerk for the past year and a half. A great part-time job that is close to home for a busy mother of two. When we posted for an administrative assistant, we were pleased to see such a strong background in accounting and business from her. Her skills fit our needs and our scheduling flexibility fits her situation, so it's been a win-win. We're excited to have Nicole in this new role, and she is learning the procedures in the administration office very quickly, so welcome, Nicole.
Welcome, Nicole.
Next, on August 4th, we moved the computers into a socially-distanced configuration in the main part of the library and increased the number of patrons permitted in the building to 15. This is still below the 25% of the fire marshal's occupancy limit as required by executive order to assure that any staff needing to complete tasks in the area, public areas, do not cause these limits to be exceeded. We are still offering curbside service and grab bags for virtual programs, and due to limits on indoor gatherings, programs continue to be virtual or socially-distanced outside. So pretty much, we're still kind of in a holding pattern. Things are kind of going the same way that they were before. The Clarkston Community Heritage Museum located within the library is now open with a new exhibit celebrating 20 years of collecting Clarkston artifacts and sharing Clarkston's history with the community. The COVID occupancy limit allows for up to four visitors in the museum at a time, and the exhibit may be viewed during regular library hours. For financial update, in addition to the two Cares, State Cares Act grants that the library was awarded, CIDL is also eligible for Oakland County Cares Act grant money. The county's program is different from the state's program in that it will reimburse libraries for eligible COVID-related expenditures that occurred during March through December 31st of 2020. The state funded specific projects that would happen after the application deadline in July. So in order for that to happen, we do need to have a signed inter-local agreement between Oakland County and CIDL, which the board will review on tonight's agenda. But we are excited about that because all that money that we had to set aside from fund balance, we are, it looks like we're going to get reimbursed for most of that through this Cares Act, which is.
Oh, cool. Great.
Nice.
Penal fine money for 2020 has arrived. We received $61,246.98. Last year, we received $75,962.02. This year's amount is about 80% of what we received last year. This can be attributed to less traffic and closure of courts due to COVID. We're always conservative in our estimate for this revenue when budgeting, so the amount we received is still higher than the amount we estimated for this year. We will need to be cautious in the 2021 budget as well, since there is still economic uncertainty due to COVID. During the economic downturn, the lowest penal fine amount we received was in 2011, and that was $41,145.62. So you'll see that reflected in the budget when I present that shortly. Next item, for the past few years, we have received a rebate from HAP that is related to the Affordable Care Act requirements. This year, the rebate we received was $2,159.24. The board's review of how to distribute these funds is on tonight's agenda, so. Seems to come the same, about the same time every year.
How does that, how does the amount this year compare with prior years, just out of curiosity?
It's been going down each year, and, and in, to be perfectly honest, that's a good thing because we are getting a rebate because HAP is supposed to spend a certain amount of the premiums that they collect for health education. And if they don't spend the right percentage on that education, they have to give it back to the people who paid the premiums. So the fact that this money is going down means they are more compliant with what they're supposed to be doing in relation to the Affordable Care Act requirements. So technically, we don't want to be getting a rebate. We wanted to do what the Affordable Care Act tells them that they're supposed to do. So it has been going down, which means they're getting closer and closer to meeting those requirements every year.
Excellent.
Although the staff does enjoy getting a rebate, and so does the library.
Well, no doubt.
Okay, in terms of project updates, when Clarkston Community Schools did their strategic plan last year, the library's hardwood team assisted them by conducting five community conversations. A few weeks ago, we were approached by the school again to conduct two community conversations to gather information about the rollout of the plan for the new school year. We have conducted the first of these two conversations, one with a group of parents. In the next few weeks, we will also conduct one with a group of school staff. The purpose of these conversations is to better assess the communication and transparency of the rollout of the plan, not the plan itself. This will assist school leaders as they move forward in the school year to communicate the continuously, continuously evolving situation. It has also been very educational for our staff as we have also been working to better communicate with the public regarding library services in this complex situation. So it's just another one of those opportunities for us to use that hardwood training that we got several years ago.
Good.
And then last, because of the COVID-19 shutdown and restrictions on gatherings, the Friends of the Library were forced to cancel their spring sale. I'm just going to give you a little bit of a recap of what Laura said. We have been unable to accept donated books because we simply have no more room to store any more books, but the Friends Board met several times to brainstorm ways to safely sell off what they'd already gathered, and in August and September, they held six mini-book sales at the Clarkston Farmer's Market. These were well-received and successfully reduced a significant number of boxes that had been intended for the spring sale, and then they'll also be holding that one for book dealers. Book dealers often purchase Friends' membership, attend Preview Night, and purchase quite a few books, so the Friends sent out a survey to come up with a good time to hold an outdoor sale that would allow book dealers the opportunity to purchase books in larger quantities to further reduce that stock of books we have in the back. We've also been discussing how to return to accepting donations with a quarantine process in place to assure that we're doing so safely for all involved, so a little bit of an elaboration of what Laura talked about.
Okay.
Any questions on my director's report?
Nope. Very clear.
That was easy.
Now for the fun part, regular business, review and approval of the budget for 2021.
So I am going to share my screen. Do this one. All right. So there are two resolutions in your packet that we'll need to have you approve at the very end. The first one is a resolution that will set the millage rate, and the second one is a resolution establishing the 2021 budget. So let's get into the nitty-gritty of the budget. There we go, okay. So just to review 2020, not in too much depth because we're still living it. Despite careful planning for an exciting year of projects and growth, 2020 has brought an unusual set of challenges. Following our mission statement, innovate, educate, and rich, I believe we've done much to pivot and adapt to current circumstances and find opportunities to try new things instead of dwelling on the things that we can't do due to COVID restrictions. There we go. Okay, so we talked a little bit about 2020, and this is our infographic of how we've sort of tackled COVID-19 and how we've tried to stay relevant and still provide library services. We talked about this earlier, so I won't dwell much on this, but I did want to put this into our presentation tonight. Okay, so our guiding principles for our 2021 budget. First, the library is still very important to our community, so we must strive to reconfigure our service model to support our residents while still keeping everyone safe and healthy. Obviously, everybody's tired of hearing this, but the situation is unprecedented and times are uncertain. However, we have weathered an economic downturn not that long ago, so the 2021 budget has been constructed using strategies learned from that experience. We do need to focus on providing stability to library services that the community needs most and provide creative new ways that fit within the COVID restrictions that require. Building flexibility into the budget to allow us to pivot when needed as the COVID situation evolves is something else that I really focused on as we, as we put this budget together. Okay, so first, let's talk about the millage rate. So this is the top portion of our 4029 request for millage. So the first thing, we do a voted millage, and it is for library purposes. It was approved in August of 2014, and the rate is 1.25. That's the voter-approved rate. So as property values increase, the Headley Amendment rolls our millage down. So last year, which would be the 2019 millage rate, which would have been what was collected in December of 2019 through February of 2020 to budget to fund the library for 2020, the millage rate had rolled down to 1.189. This year's reduction fraction is .9917. So this year's millage rate would be 1.1790. And our millage expires December of 2021, but it is inclusive. That means that in 2021, we will collect our millage from December of 2021 through February of 2022 to fund 2022, and we will be back on the ballot in August of 2022. So the way we calculate all this out is we take, this first number is the taxable value of all the properties in the township. We add it to the taxable value of all the properties in the city. We get a total tax about taxable value for our entire district. Okay, so just to kind of recap a little bit, our revenues come from just a handful of sources. Our district-wide millage of 1.25 mills rolled back to 1.1790 by the Headley Amendment. We do get state aid to libraries from the state of Michigan, which may be significantly reduced this year. Penal fines, we've already seen, that's down 20% already. Due to COVID closure, stay-home order, and materials quarantine processes, library fines were waived through the end of 2020, and duplicating revenues have been reduced due to occupancy limits in the building. And a decision about library fines in 2021 has not yet been made. So the estimate for interest and E-rate should remain stable, but our total estimated revenue should be around $2,197,386. So let's take a little bit closer look at where all that comes from. So here's the actual numbers. So we're going to be looking at this right-hand column right here. So the millage rate, when you multiply it out, comes to $2,125,886. Now, there's a concern here because this taxable value was done before COVID. So we will see people going to Board of Review asking for reduction in their, in their taxes. We have had a little bit of that, and you'll see that reflected in our refund line. We always set some money aside that if anybody gets a reduction in their taxes and we have to return money, that we don't have that money earmarked to be used for something. We do earmark a little bit of money so that we don't end up in a hole if, if people do get rebates on their taxes. So I'm a little bit concerned about this, but I've made some reductions in other places, and I've, you'll see what I've done to the budget in order to assure that we stay solvent the whole year, no matter what happens, and that's that. I was talking about what we learned back in the economic downturn. Those are the strategies that I'm talking about. Okay, so CIA tax capture, as you know, we have opted out of the CIA, so that's, that's a, usually that, back in 2018, that would have been a reduction in our revenues, but that's not something that we're doing anymore. And the township did use a millage in order to get Sashawal Road up where it needs to be. So state aid, state aid has been coming in at about $24,000 a year. It comes in in two payments. And sometimes when the economy is tight or the Michigan's budget is tight, we get the first payment, and they think that they may or may not give us the second payment. So what I usually do is I budget around half, assuming we'll probably get the first payment, but if something bad happens, we might not get the second payment. We've been very fortunate the last several years, and that ends up being a little bit of extra money, which is great because it keeps us in a good place. This year, I did lower that down to $10,000 because I think there is going to be a reduction. Now, going to the meetings that are held by the state librarian, his feeling is that even with concerns about the budget at the state level, they do not feel that that money will be coming from education, and the library is in the Department of Education, that where that money comes from, so they feel that that probably won't affect us too heavily, but you never say never. So I am going to budget us a little bit low on that. Penal fines, penal fines is another thing, as I said before, we got about $74,000 or $75,000 last year. You'll see that $55,000 is what I put us in it last year. So the fact that it dropped 20% unexpectedly, you'll notice, we're in good shape because we still got over $60,000, so we're not in a hole there. This year, you'll see, I put in $40,000. $40,000 was the lowest number we got when the economic downturn happened. So I'm taking that one very conservatively. That was 2011, and 2011 was right after that, that fall in the economy. So I'm going to assume if it's going to happen, it might happen quick because it is, penal fines come from funds that are from a cut of traffic tickets and court costs and things like that, and because the courts were closed and because people weren't traveling as much, they weren't on the roads and that kind of thing. There weren't as many traffic tickets, that sort of thing. So I'm keeping that, that number low to help us assure that we don't end up in the hole. And that fines and fees, as I said, we, when we did auto-renew, the first thing we did was auto-renew, and that helped keep our patrons from returning things late, which was great. That's a great, been great for them. It's been good for us. We get our stuff back, which is really what fines are all about. We want our stuff back so that we can get it out to the next person. I did reduce our fines and fees significantly because we have been waiving fines. Now, we are now waiving fees. If you lose an item, you still got to pay for it. But we are not charging fines for late materials, and that was something that the board decided to do until the end of 2020. So when we get to the end of the year, we'll have to decide what we're going to do in 2021. We'll just have to kind of wait and see how COVID is going. Duplicating and photocopying. Actually, Nicole would tell you that she pulled the money out of the machines today, and there was a lot more in there than we expected. But I did, I did keep that number fairly low because we just never know how many copies and printouts and things we're going to do. Interest has been holding pretty stable. That I always keep estimated a smidgen low anyway because we don't always know what's going to happen, but that number has been coming in usually around, the reality is usually around $13,000 or so, and so 10 is a good number. And then E-rate, E-rate is a federal, federal grant that helps us fund our broadband internet. Broadband is obviously really important to people right now, so I, I'm pretty sure that we're not going to be losing that subsidy for broadband in order to make sure that our community still has internet access when needed. And then just as a reminder, we used that State Cares Act grant money to purchase special Wi-Fi hotspots that have more distance on them so that our Wi-Fi signal is available throughout the parking lot and the entire library grounds so that if we do end up having to go backwards and go back to the library not being available for the public to come in, people can sit in their cars and use our Wi-Fi in the parking lot. So we are expanding that. There is a signal that goes out into the, onto the library property, but it doesn't go real far into the parking lot, and it's not, the further you get from the building, the weaker the signal becomes. And so you have to have a pretty, pretty robust device if you want to sit further out into the parking lot. So that Cares Act money is helping us to provide a much better signal for that. So the total, $2,197,386. Any questions? Nope, I see lots of shaking heads. Good. Okay, so let me move this over a little bit so I can see a little better. So employment cost assumptions. So the first thing, due to school becoming virtual, the first thing I did was take out that full-time school library liaison position. That's an outreach position that was added to the 2020 budget that was not, it had not been filled. We actually posted it just before COVID happened. We were not able to even get to the interviewing process. We got kind of pulled into our homes very, very quickly. After talking to the staffing committee, we have determined we really need to leave that vacant for 2021. As an outreach position, if the schools are going to be remote anyway, that was really all about getting a person into the buildings. And if the schools aren't doing that, it's, it's not worth risking the budget. Should keep the budget tighter. As recommended by the library board staffing committee, wages will remain unchanged in 2021. Healthcare premiums decreased 3% in 2020, and from March to December, there is a COVID reduction in half premiums of an additional 5%. Adjustments were made due to a change in staffing, but the budget has been written based on estimates prior to those reductions to prevent an unexpected shortfall if premiums go up. So I did add that number just a little bit because, you know, we had this, this 3% decrease in 2020 plus that 5% discount, and I don't want to count on that going into 2021. So I picked those numbers a little bit higher just to be sure that we've got it covered. So staffing usually accounts for 50 to 65% of the library's budget. Staffing has accounted for 59% of the operating budget for the past three years. We do try really hard to keep it at sixty percent or below. And this year, as the budget is written, it accounts for fifty-eight percent of the budget in two thousand and twenty-one. So we can take a little bit closer look at these actual numbers now that you kind of know the cost assumptions. We'll throw on the organizational chart first. Sorry, forgot I had this slide in this spot and not in the other. So this is the organizational chart that was approved last year. This is that full-time school liaison librarian, the MLIS, degreed librarian. That's the one that will leave vacant in two thousand and twenty-one, but everything else is currently filled, except for when you are appointing one person tonight, hopefully. But anyway, so that's the one that I would recommend that we leave open for a little bit of budget protection. Okay, so here's the numbers. So we're looking at this right-hand column again, this draft two thousand and twenty-one. So where it says wages permanent, those are our full-timers. You can see we took that down a little bit. That accounts for holding off that position that we had added. I did bump up the part-time number a little bit because when we made the plan to add a full-timer, we were going to eliminate a part-time children's position. So early in the year, we did have a part-time children's librarian who left because she had a baby. So we did not fill that position. And we left it, left it open knowing that we intended to fill this full-time position that we had created. Now we were going to make that easy. But since we've decided to leave that full-time position vacant, we would, I think we will want to fill that part-time position again. And then when we negotiate out what we're going to do about that full-time position later on, we'll figure that out probably in the two thousand and twenty-two budget, which would be under discussion next summer sometime. Hopefully we'll know more about COVID by then. So then there's always this overtime. This is a little placeholder. We don't actually do a lot of overtime in, in the library. There's a couple of instances when we do overtime. We do pay, we do offer the opportunity to do overtime when there's a three-day weekend. Somebody needs to come in and empty the book drop or it overflows. And so we do have a full-timer with keys often come in and we allow them to get some overtime to do that. But mostly we try to keep people on their standard schedule. So that only happens a few times a year, that three-day weekend thing. So we keep our overtime number pretty low. So FICA is based on these top three numbers. Then in health insurance, remember I said I put in a, a bit of a cushion there because I didn't know what healthcare was going to look like in two thousand and twenty-one. Life insurance, this is another one, life insurance and workers' comp, or I'm sorry, life insurance and disability and long-term disability, so short-term, and short-term and long-term disability has a lot to do with employee age. And so as the employees age, those numbers shift. And sort of like your, like your taxes, there's age groupings. And so when an employee has a birthday, it doesn't necessarily mean that the number just goes up a little bit. Sometimes it takes them up to the next age bracket. And so those numbers bump up. And so the best way I've found to estimate the life insurance, short-term and long-term disability is to look at what we've paid in the current year and then multiply that out and then bump it up a little bit. So you can see there's a little bit of a, a growth in that number and that's based on what we've been paying so far in two thousand and twenty. Retirement, that's based on wages because those are percentages. And that HCSP, that used to be OPAD, that's our healthcare savings plan. Those are the contributions that we make toward retiree healthcare. So that's also based on the percentages of the wages. And so we, we calculate that out based on that. So the total for, for staffing is one million two hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight. So this is significant changes, just as kind of a recap. The significant change is taking out that full-time position and putting that part-time position back in. As I said before, this reflects the fifty-eight percent of the two thousand and twenty-one budget. It was fifty-nine percent of the last three years, so we're down just a smidge. And then that increase in healthcare or health insurance, retirement, HCSP, life insurance and disability reflect those changes in premium, staffing and premium. Any questions about any of that?
Okay.
Nope.
Nope.
All right.
Always helps when we read it.
It does. It does, well, and a lot of times if you have questions, you, you call and ask me on it as we're, as we're developing it. So, okay. So now we're going to talk about operating costs. So I'm just going to kind of go, you can see amended two thousand and twenty. So this amended column, this one that's right here, that amended column would be the budget that you've, as all, including all of the amendments you've done up until your August meeting. So last month, that's a completely updated number. So we're comparing the draft of two thousand and twenty-one to the most recent amendments that you've made. So subscriptions, we bumped up a little bit because sometimes our subscription costs go up a little bit. You'll see operating supplies is pretty stable. Auditing fees, we know that one is stable. We have bumped up professional and contract services a bit. I'll talk about that in a moment. Special events is staying the same. Legal fees is staying the same. Telephone, we bumped up a smidge. I'll talk about that in a minute. Obviously mileage has gone down a bit. Printing and publishing, we've taken up a bit from fifty-two thousand up to sixty-three thousand. Bank fees, that one we've taken down somewhat. That's just from experience. We now know what our bank fees are going to look like because we've been doing them for a while. Insurance on the building is staying about the same. Sales tax, that's another one of those experiential things. You have to kind of make that based on what you've done in the past. So we put that number up a little bit higher. Electric is staying the same. Heat is staying the same. Sewer, I bumped up a little bit. We had a dry season, so we used more water. So I bumped that up a little bit. Building and grounds, that one we're, we're holding similar to this year and I'll explain that a little more. Equipment maintenance, I've taken that one up a bit. Conferences and workshops, I've left that one the same. That refunds and rebate, rebates, that's the thing, that's the number that if anybody goes to Board of Review and gets a refund on their taxes, that's where we put the money that we would then send back. So I like to hold a little bit of money aside to assure that if and when people do that, that we're not having to make cuts in other services in order to be able to handle that. Building budget, I took down significantly and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Equipment staying the same. The book budget has gone up somewhat, but audiovisual has gone down. And the total you'll see is down a bit from where we are for two thousand and twenty and I'll talk about that as well. So let's talk about those changes. So we, we did an increase in professional and contract services. That is to accommodate COVID-related support. Any number of, of contractors that we're using that have to do with changes in the way we operate because of COVID. The special event line remains the same, but how that money is being spent is significantly different as programs have shifted from in-person activities to take and make projects, herb side and virtual presentations. There is an increase in telephone due to changes in a service provider cost that we experienced this year. Obviously there's a decrease in mileage due to reduction in travel to trainings and meetings. So much is Zoom now, so we're going to save some money there. There's an increase in the printing budget to provide outreach to patrons who are not connecting with the library through social media. So those are those postcard mailings and things like that we've been doing. That's been pretty successful, so we'd like to continue to do some of that in the new year. There is a reduction in bank fees due to better knowledge of actual expenses. Building and grounds maintenance budget was set based on needed budget adjustments in two thousand and twenty to accommodate COVID. So that's Arlene's budget and she's been doing a really good job of tracking our expenditures. We did have to put in COVID-related money and we will get reimbursed for some of that in two thousand and twenty. As, as I said, we're doing that Oakland County Cares Act grant. But we do need to accommodate it in two thousand and twenty-one because as COVID continues, that Cares Act money most likely will not be available. So we need to be able to accommodate that going forward. The increase in equipment maintenance accommodates a project to increase the number of circulating Wi-Fi hotspots. So you'll remember we did more circulating Wi-Fi hotspots to account, to help the school with their virtual learning. And we would like to do more circulating hotspots to accommodate the public. So Bill asked that I add that into the budget, our IT manager. That refunds and rebates, as I said, we in, we increased that because we have already seen an increase in refunds in two thousand and twenty. There may be more in two thousand and twenty-one, we'll have to see. The building budget is usually set based on planned projects, but only includes funding for basic changes right now. I didn't want to commit us to too much this early because COVID is still making things very uncertain. So I didn't want to say, oh, we're definitely doing this project or we're definitely doing that project. And you'll see in a moment what I've done in order to make sure that there's money available to do things if need be. The book budget increased to accommodate additional e-collection development. You saw that hoopla went up eighty-six percent and our overdrive went up twenty-eight percent. So we are funneling lots of money into our e-collections. We were doing so already, but Brad, our head of technical services is, is in charge of that budget. And he's feeling really good about usage and was hoping for a higher budget, so I have accommodated that. And then audiovisual, we have reduced in order to shift funds into that e-collection. And some of that is because some of the services that we have are streaming. So instead of buying so many physical DVDs and CDs, we're now funneling that money into those e-services. Especially given COVID, that if we were to take a step backwards where we were sheltering at home again, we would have more things available so that the demand wouldn't be quite so hefty on those, on that collection. It wouldn't feel so limited. So there is forty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars left in undesignated revenue, which is that line way at the bottom of the budget, where I just put it in as a placeholder and as the board sees the need, you can plug that money in where it is needed. And I have a feeling this year we're going to need some flexibility. So that's where I built in that flexibility, I have forty-two thousand dollars set aside for, we don't know what's next. So this is very tiny on the screen. Sorry, I have not figured out a better way to make this easier on the screen. But basically what we did was I always put this revenue stuff, the revenue details at the bottom here. So that was the first thing that we talked about. And we hopped up to the top part of the budget up here. That's when we talked about staffing. There's that fifty-eight percent of the budget going toward that. This section in the middle is all of the operating. So we take this money, which is the staffing number, and we add it to this money, which is the operating number. And we get this total, so the total that I have budgeted and encumbered is two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand eighty-eight dollars. At the bottom, there's our revenue number of two million one hundred and ninety-seven three eighty-six. And there's that forty-two nine, two ninety-eight there at the bottom that I have as, as a placeholder that we can plug in as we figure out how COVID is going to alter the way we do business in two thousand and twenty-one. So just as a final comment, with our residents facing the challenges of a pandemic, how we provide library services is even more critical. So our mission of innovate, educate and enrich guides us as we reinvent library service to support our community. So that's the basics of the budget. Any questions that I can answer for you?
I want to thank you for a very clear presentation.
Yep.
Yes. Excellent.
Lots of detail.
Very important.
I think you've answered all of the questions
Yeah.
about the increases and how they were configured. Is there anyone else?
And just good job putting that all together with, you know, the flexibility in there. Obviously the staff put a lot of time in doing their individual budgets. As always, good job.
Thank you.
All right. You have any other comments or Eric, does anyone have any comments they want to make before we make our resolutions related to the budget? If not, we have long resolutions.
You do not have to read the whole resolution because they are published on the website.
Right. They just have to be signed eventually if we approve them. So at this time, I will accept a motion to approve the resolution setting the millage rate as presented.
Second.
We have Jan and Dan moving and seconding the resolution setting the millage rate as presented. Any other comments about that? All right. In that case, please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden Kiesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Resolution is approved. I'll accept a motion now to approve the resolution establishing the budget as presented.
Hello, the House residents, please leave a message. Thank you.
Okay. It's always something there.
You're surprised.
I'll move the approach, the resolution for adopting the budget.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution establishing the library, the Charleston Independence District Library two thousand and twenty-one budget as presented. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden Kiesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Motion, thank you. Motion is approved. Now we can get to the more interesting, fun parts. Number two, we have to appoint a full-time head of circulation.
Okay. So at the July thirteenth meeting, the Library Board approved the posting of the full-time head of circulation position. The selection committee consisted of Marilyn Pomeroy, Brad Ruder and Julie Meredith. We received twenty-one submissions and interviewed four candidates, including two internal submissions. The committee conducted a second interview with the leading candidate and contacted his references. Chris NATO is currently a circulation supervisor at the Novi Public Library. He also has several years of experience working in circulation at the Farmington Community Library and Redford Township District Library. He is knowledgeable in Polaris, TLN Shared System and Malcat. He has been strengthening his leadership skills through continuing education and believes in teamwork and collaboration. When asked to describe himself, he chose dedicated, detail-oriented and willing to try new things. His references made similar statements and included personable, approachable and compassionate. Our previous head of circulation was well-loved by our patrons, leaving big shoes to fill. The selection committee believes that Christopher is up to the task and will be a good fit on the CIDL team. The selection committee recommends Christopher NATO to be the CIDL's new head of circulation. Based on the wages of other staff and Christopher's experience, we recommend a salary of forty-seven thousand. In terms of budget, this is a budgeted position and the recommended wage and benefits can be accommodated in the current budget.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? This was a very lengthy procedure.
Yes, it was.
Due to COVID and difficulties that have occurred in the library systems, we have a lot of people, highly qualified people who would like this position. And so working through those who would provide a good fit and had the requisite experience was very important. And that's why we actually conducted a second interview that was more specific than the first. And we were pleased with the results and we're looking forward to welcoming Chris if the board will approve this recommendation. And I will accept a motion.
Hey, I move that we appoint Christopher NATO with a salary of forty-seven thousand dollars a year and the standard benefits package of a full-time employee with a date of hire October fifth.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? No, we want to thank everyone who participated. Thank you. And if that is the case, let's call the roll.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden Kiesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. So we will look forward to his arrival. Now let's look at the Oakland County Cares Act grant. We need an approval of inter-local agreement. And we have paperwork on And we have paperwork on that next.
So the Clarkson Independence District Library has been awarded two Cares Act grants from the state of Michigan to assist in dealing with COVID-19 pandemic. One to purchase face coverings, and the other to improve Wi-Fi access on the library grounds. Oakland County also has Cares Act funds to distribute and has specifically set aside money to reimburse libraries for expenses incurred from March to December in response to COVID-19. Unlike the state grants, which were issued to make future purchases, Oakland County will be distributing their funds to reimburse for purchases that have already been made, such as Plexiglas shields, PPE for staff, cleaning products, et cetera. In order to receive these reimbursements, we must submit a list of expenses with the receipts by September 30th along with a board-approved, signed copy of an inter-local agreement with Oakland County. The agreement is included in your board packet for review and approval. The interesting thing is, though, it's this agreement that they have provided specifically talks about a "together" grant. So basically, what we would do is substitute in the Cares Act wording for each individual one. That particular documentation is not available. It wasn't available in time for the meeting. So I'm hopeful that everything else will be the same. It's my understanding. It's just a difference that they'll be plugging in Cares Act instead of the "together" grant or whatever it was called, the Oakland Together CVT funds. It will say Oakland County Cares Act funds in all of those places.
Paperwork.
Yeah, so, so I think what would be helpful is if you approve the inter-local agreement between Oakland County and Clarkson Independence District Library, and then authorize the board president to sign it on behalf of the library, given that it will be slightly changed. But if there were anything in it that were not basically word-for-word what's here except for those basic changes, we would bring it back to you for another look. But there's a September 30th deadline, and I was worried that if I didn't go ahead and have you do this, that we would not be eligible for the grant. So this is a timing thing that's...
I move that we approve the inter-local agreement between the county and the library and authorize the board president to sign.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this interlocal agreement. And the president will sign it if approved. Julie, please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Nicole has a lot of things to keep track of tonight. Moving on to number four, the HAP rebate.
Hey, HAP rebate. We're almost there, guys. Hang in there with me. Okay, so the HAP rebate. On August 5th, the library received a letter from HAP informing us that we would be receiving a rebate as part of the requirements of the Affordable Care Act. Libraries rebate is $2,159.24 and must be used toward healthcare. We also received a rebate the last three years, and basically, I'm proposing we handle it in a similar way. We have deposited the check into budget line item 716, which is health insurance. Hold the funds until distribution can take place. As in the past, we propose distributing these funds based on the division of contributions toward healthcare premiums. In this case, the library contributes 80%, and the employees contribute 20%. The library portion will be used toward future healthcare premiums, and the employee portion will be divided and returned to the employees through a one-time reduction of the payroll deduction for healthcare premiums. Funds that would be attributed to employees that no longer work for the library can become part of the library's portion and used toward future premiums. In 2018, we transitioned to an age-rated plan. So each employee has a unique premium amount, which changes every year based on age. Last year, we calculated out an individual amount for each employee, which was incredibly complicated and very time-consuming, resulting in a reimbursement that was only slightly different for each employee. So I would propose this year, we simply divide the employee amount, that 20% of that rebate, by the number of employees enrolled in the program in 2019, and make a one-time reduction of their healthcare contribution in that amount. This method provides appropriate documentation that the funds are being used for healthcare. Since healthcare premium contributions are pre-tax, this distribution method ensures that the funds are returned the same way they were contributed and that they are subject to the appropriate taxes upon their return. The distribution method was approved by the accountant and auditor as adhering to the rebate guidelines in terms of use and documentation. This distribution can take place during the next payroll if board approved. Any questions about that?
No, I'm glad that the accountant and the auditor reviewed that.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, because it is a change that could have an impact on the audit probably more than anything. So if they've approved it, then I don't see that it's any problem.
So essentially, the argument that I'm making of making it the same for all the employees is that even though the employees are contributing different amounts for the various dependents, what we're doing is returning the amount for the employee, him or herself. So each person would get the same amount. And it completely, I mean, it took me hours and hours to calculate it out last year. And the numbers were so similar, I thought, okay, this is not an efficient way to do this.
Not cost-effective.
No, and actually, your argument that, yes, it really only applies to the employees because the education factor would have really only been available to the employees. They could have shared the information with their families and dependents however they wished, but the education would have been presented to each employee. So that's, that's really a pretty good argument.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, in that case, I will accept a motion to approve the HAP rebate and distribution plan thereof.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the distribution plan for the HAP rebate as presented. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Thank you. Number five, update regarding the 2020 staff training day on October 2nd.
This one, technically, I'm just asking you to allow me to reopen the library on a day that you had already said we could be closed. But I figured since it was a board-made decision that I should use this as an opportunity to let you know what was decided and have you undo what was already done. So last year, the library board approved the 2020 library closure calendar with the inclusion of Friday, October 2nd, as a closer for a staff training day. Due to COVID restrictions on gatherings, we will be unable to have an in-person shared staff training day with neighboring libraries as we have done in the past. Since the library was closed for so long due to COVID, we propose remaining open on Friday, October 2nd. The department heads are brainstorming with their teams about ways to have some sort of virtual training opportunity that we could accomplish without a building closure. So basically, what I'm asking is for you just to approve that we're changing the closure calendar and that we will be open on Friday, October 2nd. And I just wanted to make it official so that there was no question that you knew that we had a limit, training is very important to me and to the board, and I just wanted to make sure that you were completely aware that that's what we had done for this year.
More innovation.
Yes.
I'll accept a motion.
No.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the change to the 2020 library closure calendar to now be open on Friday, October 2nd. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Motion is approved.
All I have for you tonight, I will mention that the governor did extend her executive order, her state of emergency. So it has extended yet another month our Zoom meetings. But I think that our Zoom meetings are getting, we're getting better at it.
Yeah, I think the screen sharing worked pretty well tonight, Julie.
Yeah.
Yes, I want to thank everyone. I know last month, it was difficult hearing through the masks.
It was.
Yeah.
So this worked much better. Besides, I love seeing all your backgrounds.
But we did a trial run with the staffing committee.
Yeah.